Newport City Regular Council Meeting is called to order at 6 o'clock. Present, President Chris Bishan, council members Kevin Charbonneau, Claude Curtis, Alfred Guffett-Chase, City Clerk and Treasurer James Johnson, our City Manager Jonathan Delagre, additional members here are Fire Chief, members of our, members from our Fire Department, our Police Chief, that is a woman, Police Chief from Fire Department. And, uh, City Attorney, is there anyone else on there? No, good to have you here. Um, next item on the agenda is additions and deletions to the agenda. President Bishan?
Councilman Shonda?
Uh, yes. It's been drawn up a number of times, we voted on it in June. Uh, to have a special meeting or a meeting to address the personnel policy. I would like to have that on the meeting tonight just to discuss it. And go from there, but it's, it's been several times. So I'd like to add that.
Councilmembers asked that, are you going to make a motion today?
We don't have to have a motion.
No, I'm just asking, like, I'm gonna say you're asking to have that on.
Yes.
A council member is asking for the personnel policy to be added to the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post a name. I always had it and we will add Personnel Policy Discussion.
Everybody vote aye?
Yes.
Okay, just a clarification, what number are we putting in?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that in one second, okay? So just bear with me one second. Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Alfred Guffett-Chase?
No, thank you.
Uh, Treasurer?
No.
City Manager? I have, um, one item that we need to shift, and then right after we do that, I'll assign a number for the council members. So, um, I'd like to move number 10, okay, which is the Employee Labor Relations Executive Session to go before number 8, so that that particular employee doesn't have to wait for all of the executive sessions, and, um, so if he makes sure when he comes in, we're aware. If he doesn't show up because he thought it was later, we'll move it. So, is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, and then let's find, uh... I'm going to put, uh, Councilmember Charbonneau's item as number, okay, I'll give you a second please. As number, uh, just before number 11, which will now be our new 12, okay, before comments by members of the public, okay? Are you, are you good with that, Kevin? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. We have the regular minutes of September 16, 2024. We have the special meeting minutes of September 27, 2024. Counts Payable Warrants, September 18, 24, 25, 26, 27, 30, October 2, and October 4. We have Payroll Warrants of September 19 and October 3, and Liquor Licenses, Vendor Permits, Special Events Permits. Good with that?
Can we discuss something?
Yes, we can discuss anything you want, I just want to make sure that I have all of the dates and everything. Yes.
I have a lot on the, um, I meant to go see Jim, but I didn't have it.
It's okay.
Credit card for $1,398 from 9/18 to 9/18, page 1.
What was 13, what?
Nine.
Uh, $1,398, 82. Next to the last item, $1,472, 50 for Traffic.
So that is, I can answer that.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, that's for the Engineering for the Causeway Project.
The 14 project, wow.
The 14, TCE.
I'm sorry, for what?
For the Causeway.
9/24 to 9/24, page 1. Nothing against any of these, I just don't know what they are. Freds Plumbing and Heating, $40,000. Fuel.
Without looking at the actual invoice, I don't feel like I can.
Rebuy, we don't...
I can, without looking at the invoice.
The $40,000 for Freds?
Yeah, those are, those are...
Those were accumulated.
Accumulated bills, they've been accumulated, they're all paid off.
On 9/25, page 1 of 1, whole bunch for Freds, $24,000, $6,000.
I know, I can answer the six and the fives, those are, those are the fuel cards, the monthly fuel cards.
Any others?
I don't, I don't know what the total is. I can.
I don't need an answer this minute. Elevator Company, oh, I'm sorry, um, 9/26 to 9/26, page number 2. Aldrich and Elliott Services, again, 2160, Aldrich and Elliott.
Yep, so we utilized Engineering for two projects, the Water Tower Project and the Bluff Road Pump Station. I don't know which ones which, just by looking at this, but...
Elevator Company, is that like an annual inspection?
Yep, the annual inspection for this building.
Maybe, but I want to make sure. And then, um, 9/27 to 9/27, page 1. I don't know if I'm gonna get this right, the Hawk Company Field Service, $3,000?
I don't, I'd have to call the invoice.
Is something in that one? Hawk Company, I think it's actually in the, might be in the packet.
I'm trying to figure which one it is.
It's not, um, Jonathan, can I ask?
I don't need it this minute, just if I could get it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um, 10/2 to 10/2, page 1 of 1, all kinds of Freds on the fuel, fuel, fuel. $16,000.
Which one?
10.
Okay.
What are all those? It's a lot of...
The five, seven, six is the current, right? The same, the same dollar.
It's like $62,000 for fuel. And then taking this, and then the pages from before.
So I think they're the exact same dollar amounts.
From the other page?
Yep, so 9/25 and 10/2 to 22, 4, 4, 6.
Any other?
Has the audit been completed? I noticed a bill for the Audit Company, $3,000. Has it been completed, or is that... Well, there's journal entries, it has to be done, but, you know, they go back and finish there. If you don't finish the day, then you'd be out, so it's, it's an ongoing thing.
And then they have like 30 days after, Kevin, they have like 30 days after to go and finish their field work, and then they'll send out letters to management, they've started to do some of that, and then they'll send those out.
Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Good?
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
I didn't see in the packet any requests for Liquor Licenses, Vendor Permits, or Special Events Permits, so I just want to make sure that's the case, we're not passing something we haven't seen.
That's all, in case there is.
Thank you.
So can I have a motion, please, to approve the Consent Agenda as identified? Have a second?
Second.
With the motion, second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post a name. I always have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the City Financial Position with a discussion. I'm going to just begin the discussion. Uh, do you want to just kind of do this, jump in and...
Sure.
You're gonna begin and I'll jump in, or you want me just to start?
You go.
Okay. So in your packet was included the balance sheet and the Budget Status Report that shows through the end of the quarter. I think to highlight is that the expense side of it, we finished at 25.5% after the end of the quarter. So on the expense side of things, I think we're doing very, very well, we're exactly where we should be.
Sorry, Jonathan, can you just point me to exactly where you're looking, so I'm over that spot?
So this would be the Budget Status Report, so that's the second document.
Yep.
And this, the way a Budget Status Report in NMRIP is broken down is it starts with your revenue at the beginning. So again, it starts with taxes, and we can see, so our property taxes for the year on the municipal side is just under $5 million, but we've actually collected 2.2, and so the difference between that is what's actually gonna go to the school system that we defended. So again, revenue at the beginning, expenses. Your revenue total, your revenue total is on page four. And obviously, you're seeing more than what we budgeted for, so sometimes this number is just a little tricky, right? It's showing 152%, but that's because the school amount is in there. That is where your expenses start as well, and they go all the way through the various departments, Police, Recreation, Public Works, to page 21, which is where your total expenditures is going to be for the year. So out of our $7.3 million budget, we've spent 1.8, which is 25.5% of our total budget.
This is for the first quarter of the month of...
This is for the first quarter, July, August, and September. And a couple things to note, you know, we do get a sizable payment in lieu of taxes. In the budget, it's $615,000, which typically comes in roughly the first of November, so that is gonna be coming within a few weeks, and that's a fairly large portion. Other than that, you know, I think the various dollar amounts trickle in throughout the year, depending on what the different sources are, you know, zoning permits are gonna tick up in the spring when people are building things. Dog licenses, for example, are due April 1st, so you're gonna see that kind of revenue at different times of the year, depending on what it is, but just looking at that snapshot from the 50,000-foot view, we're looking really good so far.
Any questions, or... Just on that part?
I have one question, trying to find it here, page 32 to 34. I see no actuals in the Debt Service column, or no, in the actual column, I don't see any Debt Service. Can somebody explain why not?
Those payments, it looks like one is a vehicle, I would say, a 2001, a principal and interest, and just that payment probably isn't due yet, is my, my guess. Same on some of these, there's principal and interest, and I don't know exactly if we know, you know, when those payments are due, but they just, the payment hasn't come due yet, is my, just...
Thank you.
I want them to come due in November.
And where, where would the interest that we're paying on the line of credit show up on this report?
There's a line in there.
You think it's under Debt Service, Jim?
No.
Somewhere else, okay. Okay.
Okay.
There's one, there's one.
I'll look, I'll look more carefully at it, thank you, I just didn't see it and wondered if you knew where it was.
Any other questions, thoughts?
Right there. If I can't see the line, I don't, I'd have to call it. Okay. Yeah, I can get that for you, right?
I'd just be interested, since we're talking so much about that line of credit.
At least just tell the page number, so, or you don't have...
I don't have it off, no, I have to pull it.
Who knows where to find it, I guess.
Okay, that's fine.
The interest. And then when it goes ahead, the interest. Oh, that's not the one, that's, that's the water. That is, that's the water.
The challenge, I can't see a line. Just see where it was placed. But if I, I know it was charged at the subject, so...
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll take a closer look, and come ask questions if I have them.
Any other topics on the financials at this point in time that anybody would like to bring up here?
No, we've got the, the extension on the line of credit, and I brought in the $400,000. The bank statement this morning was, uh, $930,000 in the, in the checking account, but we've warrant total $580,000 left, because the tax was going out.
Anything else, sir?
Tax bills went out, the first installment is due the 15th, so we're gonna see money trickling in from those. I assume escrows and some, some residents are already starting to, to bring in money, but that, the payment isn't due until the 15th in November.
Right, which is what we anticipated, that's why we did...
Yep.
Yeah, so probably there's a lot of people paying the whole thing this time around, now.
See, all you have to do is ask.
That's half the money we'll be getting in the next round.
Right.
Oh, there it is, you're right, it's on that same warrants page, some six savings bank line of credit interest. The one that we looked at last, correct?
So I was, I was telling Chris, I just have to, knowing some six, sorry, when I report for some six, then we can see what line item it is, and then I can get back to you on where in the budget we're placing that.
So...
Is that for more?
No, uh, no, it was a copy that we have.
I guess one thing, I don't know if it, it would be helpful, it would be, it would be one extra button for Stacy to click on, but it, it would give you the line item per thing on each.
That would be very good, if you could have that done, so we could see that in detail.
Yep, so it's, it's gonna make the warrants longer, because it takes every one and splits it into two, but it shows you where in the budget each transaction is going to.
That would be really helpful, we could, especially during this period, we'll go through the financial discussions once it's all concluded, and you could go back for a while. Do it the old way, thank you for that, that would be very good.
So I have one other question, based on that little exchange about people, some people paying their bill in full. Excuse me, Jim, I'm just wondering, I guess I would request, if that's happening, I'm gonna want to know on November 15th, or shortly thereafter, when we look at the total tax income, how much income is represented by people who've paid their bills in full for the year? And how much is, so if that's something we can track from now through November, because we're, we're all about cash flow management right now, right? And so the, the logical assumption would be that we're only getting half of the cat, the tax bill upfront. So if some significant portion of it is coming in in full, and we're not gonna see it later on, I'd like to know that in November.
You could probably run a balance, if it's zero, then, you know, you know those were the ones paid in full.
Because you can do what's owed to you as of that day.
Yep.
And if it's more than 50%, you're gonna know how much more than 50%.
I see.
But I don't think you're gonna be able to break it down per property.
Can you, can you not do a balance, do any of the zeros run through, that means they prepaid?
I can tell you what we're supposed to get, and how much we get.
Correct.
Okay, so, but we can...
Okay, we're dramatically over it, tell, it's the answer to my question.
The other kind, and the people who don't, haven't paid anything.
I understand, which is equally worse over and over.
But to you, to your point, I said with Jonathan, and we'll, we'll can see what kind of reports we want to get.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, and we'll figure it out, I'm thinking that if there's a zero amount, then we may be able to run something, but we can go and look. Okay. Any other discussion on the finances at this point? I know we're just starting, because it's going to be on every single meeting going forward, and we're gonna be adding to this discussion, but is there anything anybody wants specifically to see? You don't have to say it now, just email me, and we'll get those reports and that information for the next meeting. But if you want, if you, if you have anything else you'd like to say now, we'd be free.
Yeah, I guess as, as you dive into this, if there are, you know, whether it's the warrants or the Budget Status Report, if there's, we can take each line item and do a detailed transaction and pull up what makes up that total, so if for some reason you get to a budget line item, we're supposed to be at 25% right now, and it's at 500%, why, right? We, we can kind of dive into that, now it may be a $30 line item, and we've spent $500, right? Where it's not a huge dollar amount, but it inflates the percentages. So taking a, a deep dive into each one of those line items, we can do as well, if there's something that catches your eye.
Yeah, thanks, thank you for that.
Yes, so I, this is very, this feels like a helpful start to me, so thank you. And, um, Madam Mayor, you may be the best person to answer this, given your background, but I'm thinking about the tool, or tools, that are going to be useful to us in trying to actually get to the root of what's going on, and why the line of credit is constantly maxing out, and kind of where our problem is. And in the past, when I've worked with larger budgets, one of the tools that I found most useful is what I called a financial projection, which is actuals year-to-date, and best guesses from there forward about what's actually going to happen compared to what we budgeted, right? So that we can actually see in November, where are we, what, you know, what's actually taken place? And this is, you, if I knew the budget better, I could probably guess a lot of that from this document. Um, so I don't know, that may not be the only or the best tool.
No, so that, those are the types of tools, and, um, Jonathan and I have already begun speaking about them, we're gonna be doing the target break-evens in the actuals, and we're going to get that for all of these meetings. Already started to put together a list of what's going to be needed, so we can actually go in and see if some person can help. But that's, what you described is exactly what could be part of this, and we just call it something else.
Yeah, and I can afford to be educated, because...
No, it's okay, it's just, but I'm saying, yes, so, um, the actuals are important, the timing of the actuals, when we're over or under, so that we can actually project now, is the key factor of what we're going to be doing, and I'll dive on, while they're working on the budget process as well, and they work...
Good point, right, that's the other thing that I'm, obviously, yeah.
That is the point, is it needs to be worked on simultaneously with that, so that we can not just be guessing.
Yep.
But this report will tell you on expenses, where your percentage is, it'll also tell you what percentage of revenue's come in.
Okay.
Right.
It's all...
Right.
Right.
On those sheets.
Great.
Where you stand percentage-wise, on both revenue and expense.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Um, so we're just having a discussion, it's not open to the public, it's informed, okay? So thank you, so...
Okay, I'm gonna go home and read this very, very carefully tonight, before I go to bed.
Would you wait, would you wait until we adjourn?
Then I'm gonna text you.
Yeah, right, so this is just a discussion here for us to get started, we're, you know, we haven't opened anything up for votes or plans. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Public Records Request, the PRA City Rate. And it's our Public Records Request Policy, we're going to have a discussion on this, and we're going to actually recognize our city attorney, and the purpose of this is a discussion for our attorney to explain the process that this involves, and what this means. And, um, I have had, begun to have meetings with our department heads, so that they understand that we're discussing it, and then once we finish the process discussion with our city attorney, we will have more meetings with our department heads to begin to inform them how to proceed. So, Priya Smith, Counselor, thank you for joining us, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and hello, City Council, and to council members. So, with the, um, large number of record requests we've been receiving, there's been interest in looking at the, uh, the city adopting its own charges schedule under the PRA. The, um, the statute allows municipalities to adopt their own schedule of charges. The, in absence of this schedule of charges, the Secretary of State schedule controls, and that's what the city can charge for copies provided and staff time. However, that is a little bit out of date and fairly old, and if the city wanted to update its own charges schedule, but we're up to date, reflecting the modern costs of, of providing these records, the statute requires that the... the statute requires that the council hold a hearing in which these costs, the costs are presented to the council, and likely staff will provide a recommendation based on the facts that they've provided, on what it costs to produce these copies. And the council, after that public hearing, decide what those schedule, what the charges schedule will be. Now, when deciding what to charge for copies, the statute's very specific in that the council can only consider the following factors when deciding what the actual cost of providing a copy are. The cost of the paper, or the electronic medium to which the public record is copied, a prorated amount for maintenance and replacement of the machinery or equipment used to copy the record, and three, any utility charges directly associated with copying the record. So that will be, what's the rental cost of the machine, the cost of maintenance for the machine prorated over time, and along with the actual cost of the paper per sheet. Now, when we get to staff time, the statute doesn't provide specific factors you have to consider, but it should be based on the actual cost of staff time. So we recommend that you consider the staff persons, or a group of staff persons' salary, and prorate that over time, so the amount of hours that are being used from that staff person's time for this. The council can find an average salary for staff persons at a certain level, and then perhaps, like the Secretary of State's schedule does, create a second level for the cost of senior staff time. So I suppose that's the prompt, because you have to have a hearing, and it has to be based on actual costs, it has to be logical, and based on actual costs for the paper and the actual cost of staff time. And it has, definitely, with whatever number you can come up with for staff time, you should have a logical reference and support with the numbers of what the city's actually paying staff. Does that make sense, or is there any questions?
Yes, any questions here? So just so you know, that we will be having department head meetings, and we'll be working with a department head, so that we can put this together, come up with reasonable assumptions based on this plan, and we will discuss it with our council, and go from there. And then, once we feel comfortable, then we will go back to our attorney, get ready for the hearing, and with the guidance from the city attorney.
Yeah. The process is fairly straightforward, it's just a public hearing, you just have to have the evidence brought before you and prepare.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the PD Cruiser vest purchase with an anticipated vote. I'd like to recognize our police chief.
There we go. Uh, so I brought a little show intel, just so you guys could see what I was talking about. Uh, so these are actually our cruiser vests that we carry in each car, we have seven cars, so there are seven of these. These belong with the vehicle, so if we're responding to a known threat, any kind of critical incident, active shooter scenario, we have access to these, okay? These are different than the patrol vests that we wear every day. And these are rated, they call them level three, three A, rated to stop, like higher level of ballistics, like most rifle rounds. Uh, there's a panel from the end back, and essentially, that's what we're replacing in these. And this is what the panel looks like, and these are good for five years, and they have, they're coming to the end of their life, so we have to replace these. Uh, I have set money aside in the capital plan over the last years to make these purchases, but I need approval from the council to do that with that money, so that's what I'm asking for. Any questions? Seven, so there's seven, there's fourteen plates, these are a little over five hundred dollars a piece, so about seventy-five hundred dollars total.
Is that done for our cruiser?
Yeah.
Other council questions? So, may I have a motion to approve the purchase of the PD Cruiser vests? A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments, Ms. Grimm? Please remember.
Laurie Grimm, Newport, so I'll ask you, so there is actually money available in the budget to cover all of that?
Uh, yes, so I have set money aside in the capital plan every year. I set five thousand dollars aside each year, and I looked today with the city manager, and there's thirteen thousand dollars in there right now. And that's after purchasing the vests that I purchased this spring, I guess.
Right.
Yeah.
Further discussion? A motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the DPW salt bids with an anticipated vote. The superintendent of streets, DPW director, said that he has Compass Minerals on there for ninety oh three, and Carjil Salt for ninety-six twenty-five. He said that there is a Dallas seventy-eight difference in the per-ton cost. He paid last year ninety-two sixty-six from Compass Minerals, and Carjil is three thousand fifty-nine cents higher than last year, and he says he annually uses around fifteen hundred tons. He suggests that we take the lower bid from Carjil Salt at ninety-six point twenty-five cents a ton. That's pretty straightforward. Any comments? Can I have a motion to accept the recommendation from our DPW department head for the Carjil, um, Carjil Salt bid for the salt bin?
So.
And the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Now, the next item on the agenda is the one that we moved. This will be our Employee Labor Relations Executive Session 1VSA Section 313A1D. May I please have a motion to go into executive session and invite the employee from the police department into the session? I have a motion, do I have a second? A motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried, we are now in executive session. We're out of executive session, no action was taken.
Is Jim all set?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to remove Officer Moore from the mayor's retirement system to establish his own retirement plan with comparable benefits, and authorize the city council to sign any necessary forms.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the Fire Chief Personnel Matters Executive Session 1VSA Section 313A1. May I please have a motion to enter into executive session, invite the police chief and specific fire department personnel to enter the executive session? I have with me Mr. Goucler and Mr. Andy Carban, right? So those two people, please enter into executive session, may I?
Travis.
Yeah, I said the police chief. All those in favor, may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, motion is carried, and we are in executive session. We're out of executive session, no action has been taken.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion.
Proceed.
I'd like to move that we appoint Kevin Lacoste, the current Second Assistant Chief of the Fire Department, to be interim fire chief effective beginning tomorrow, October eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, before I open it up, I want everyone to know that the reason that we are doing this is because during the process of continuing to find the permanent fire chief, it is important for us to have a seasoned fire chief in there right now, who can focus the time with the other firefighters. And so, because of the former interim chief's seasoned experience, and going forward, we need to be sure that the city is moving in the direction so our fire department is intact. So, I have a motion and a second, any questions? Sure. Did you catch that?
So, Jonathan will no longer be interim chief, and Kevin will be coming in.
Correct. Can we extend our condolences to Kevin, who really wants to be out of this? Give you fresh emotions on Tuesday against this, go back. Right, and I wanna thank him for doing that and stepping to that. So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is Employee Valuation Executive Session 1VSA Section 313A3. May I have a motion to find the premature public general knowledge of confidential attorney-client communications made for providing legal services to the city council? We place the city at a substantial disadvantage because disclosure of the otherwise confidential advice and communication would harm the city by waiving the city's attorney-client privilege, 1VSA Section 313A1F. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. May I have a motion, please, to enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications with the city attorney for the purpose of providing professional legal services, and invite the city attorney throughout, to enter into the executive session pursuant to 1VSA Section A313.
So.
The motion, do I have a second?
I don't know who did the first, it was a tie.
I have a tie on the motion, can I have identification?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried, and we are in executive. We're out of executive session, no action was taken. The next item on the agenda is the Personnel Policy Discussion. Kevin, you wanna run me that?
The section on the grievance policy, we have seen that one. Why it's necessary, but again, we could flesh it out and put in there, just, you know, correct the batch of plans, and spell it out, so that it's there, we have a guide to go by. But I do think it's necessary for consistency, fairness, equity of all the department heads to have the non-union employees. That's, I'd like to see that, you know, back there today. There's also some other portion of the contract about the.
There's some questions about the overtime section.
Mm-hmm, right, so I'm gonna ask this, and just a question. Would you be available for me, with me, to do a call with our city attorneys and go through some of these things, and then we can flush out some of the stuff, and then bring it back?
Yeah.
So, within the next week, we can, or two weeks max, you're going away, I know. So we'll come up with a time, and then we can go through some of these things, and then, I think that might be the best way. And then, and if there's any information missing, then we can, then, you know, we can go and talk to, to speak with and bring it back here, would the council be open to that?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there anything in that policy about yearly or semi-annual evaluations?
Yeah, so we, I'll go through a whole hit list of things that I have still out there, talk with you about it, and then we could deal with the city attorneys and walk through those, and then we can get this where it needs to be. But I think it would be extremely helpful if you would do that with.
Gloria.
You good with that? Okay. Okay, here we go. Comments by members of the public, and I'm sorry, I'm rubbing my eyes. Okay, members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present. I'm not crying because the press is present.
We made her cry. Don't let her cry.
Okay, and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but our distinct from public hearings to town meetings is that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity for express opinions about matters specified by the city council, to conduct orderly and efficient meetings, and kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting, and I thank you. So I'm going to read your name, please come up, identify yourself, and you will have your two minutes, and will I present it? B.R. Hopkins. Ms. Hopkins, thank you so much for being so patient.
Well, I think other people in the room have been more patient, you guys have been working. Jennifer Hopkins, resident of Newport. I wrote down two items, one of which was asking, which has already been addressed, what the status of the personnel policy was, so I'm glad to see that that's going to move forward as it was promised before. The other thing is a point which is just of concern, and I heard our city manager address today, that we've just reviewed in your packet, a quarterly report of our expenditures. However, before that, you approved warrants that were, I believe, I was looking for my piece of paper, how could I lose one piece of paper between here and out there? Anyway, I believe it is the eighteenth of September were some of those warrants. Now, maybe those are some due within ten days, usually thirty days. So those were expenditures that should have been maybe from August, but certainly from September. So if we're looking, or the council is looking at. So if we're looking, or the council is looking at that budget report of expenditures, as Jonathan said, you're right on the nose because we're at 23%. It's not including, as far as I know, all of the expenditures. So I just think it is rather distressing. We don't know. I gather that was published on the 4th. So it probably was expenditures from Jim's office through the 30th, but we didn't have enough funds to pay at least two weeks' worth of warrants. So that's my concern, that the council keep that in mind. Because, you know, we can't raise the taxes. So we've got, you know, a potential real problem of going into a deficit at the end of this year, either December 31st or June 30th.
Thank you. And we are, just, I, since I know you probably watched the meetings, but you weren't here for some of them. And so we were, the treasurer did bring up a lot of these issues and we were addressing them and doing the lines of credits. And this has not fallen off the top priority of the eyes of the council.
Which, which I realize, but I still think, saying, you know.
No, I understand the.
That is a distortion that really, you know, raises my hackles a little.
And, and we are, right. And so we are looking at all of that. And I just, you know, please don't take a simple statement like that as the gospel.
No, no. It's just I think that there are other people who have not been as well-informed as ones who the city council or even comes. So it just.
Yeah. But I do appreciate the input from you because we know, you know, it's welcome. Okay? So thank you for that.
All the citizens, it's a part of the law.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, you know, these are issues and that's what we're dealing with. And it's been a lot more complex.
I think it's, yeah, I realize it's complex.
And so, so thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, and I'm not. On new business. President Fashan?
Were you going to speak about the liaisons?
Right. I was going to do it under all business, but all did it as a business. So we have the rotation of the liaisons. Did you happen to make the list of first up? So it's time for our rotation to start. I belong now to the zoning administrator. Kevin, you are the fire department. You are the DPW. You are PD in your rec.
Yep.
Okay? So that's the rotation now. Remember, you're there to learn about the department. Okay? And so anyone has any questions on that process, please reach out.
Who was questioned?
P.
We got the P and then we got the E.
Notice you waited till after we got the vest approved. Okay. Councilmember Sharbino?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Afiches?
Thank you.
Treasurer?
No.
Okay. I do want everybody to know that FEMA has reached out. We were, the administration asked FEMA to come to the city of Newport and to please see if we could help them set up for the emergency that they have for the next 60 days so they can get people registered who were affected in Orleans County. And our department heads worked really hard. And then we met with FEMA today. And we're going to be sending them up downstairs in the community room. And because they needed specific parking, et cetera, they're bringing their own security team. I was pleased that they asked for Newport because they were officially going to be going elsewhere. But they were requested by the administration to come here. They were eager to do that. And so we will have a lease with that. But we'll, once I get the lease, I'll share that with everybody. And so that went off very well today. I also want you to know that myself, the president of the council and certain members of the council, council member Curtis, and I just haven't heard back from you yet because you aren't here and I'll fill you in. Okay? We are doing a press conference on October 18th at 11:00 a.m. at the State House regarding the issues on hospitals. Okay? And the situation that is going on there. We are putting together, I'm meeting again with this CEO, with Tom Frank, who's going to be joining us there. And we will be addressing all of the issues that came up in the report that was issued and how it went to Newport, and we will be taking a strong stance. So I will send you more information on that.
I'm going to be out of town.
Right. I know that, but I, but there's some information that I need to get to you anyway. And so I will send that after my meeting this week. I think it's Wednesday with Tom. It'll be like my third meeting with him, Tom Frank. And so we will go forward with that. There are residents who are going to be signing up, who want to either send us statements to make or want to come to that press conference. So the informations should be published, I'm hoping, tomorrow in the paper. I've had them do all that. Okay? So yes, sir.
When is it again?
October 18th.
It's a Friday?
At, yes. At 11:00 a.m. at the State House. And it's been reserved and we're already.
Not earlier?
Yes.
Is this just, just to speak about North Country or are the other hospitals?
North Country. This is Tom Frank's and mine and our members here talking about North Country.
Okay. It's on Friday?
Yes. Okay? It's important. Forgot to say that. But I just want you all to know. And just because a council member isn't there doesn't mean they are not joined with us in this. It just means that they have another obligation or they're away. Okay? If anybody wants to get me a statement who can't be there, just please feel free and I will send out statements that we're going to make so everybody can see and you can sign up.
And can you make a statement that you really like the public to believe?
Oh, absolutely. It says that in what's going out tomorrow, hopefully in the paper. It says how to sign up, who's coordinating, all of that. I've gotten a lot of people.
Not everybody reads the paper.
Well, it's a start. But there's, right, right. But I'm saying it's yes. And so there's going to be that. And right after my meeting with Mr. Frank, we'll really start to get more coverage and things out there. So, yes. Now going to all business. President Fashan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Sharbino?
Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Afiches?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes, I do.
Oh.
I've got documents that need to be signed for that construction line of credit.
Oh, okay.
So it sings on the back of the first page and on the long back of the third page and the long form. The last page is mine.
Just the mayor or all of us?
All of us.
Okay.
Give her that.
Yes, so I need somebody who does to make sure that I can access my names or not. That's all you got? So this, the go the extra mile candidates, I'm going to ask that if anybody has any other recommendations for the go the extra mile heroes or heroines, that you please get them to President of the Council and myself because I'm going to ask the President to announce who are go the extra mile who's a reason for the next council meeting. So we could get them up on the website and get them out there. Okay? Next item on the agenda is to set the next meeting to regularly schedule council meeting for October 21, 2024.
So.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, can I have a motion to adjourn the regular meeting at 10:08?
How many times?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Oh, yeah.
Anyone not wanting to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, motion is carried. Thank you.